Have your attention, please. We'll be starting up shortly. Good evening and welcome to the Lowell Planning Board for November 4th, 2024. The first matter on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes from October 21st, 2024. Anybody have any comments or corrections?
The minutes were not as half as long as the meeting, Mr. Chairman, I'll say that. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Second motion being second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Chair, vote yes, and minutes are approved. First matter we have on is a public shade tree hearing for Muldoon Park on 5 Barica Street. In accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 87.5, in Chapter 260 of the Lowell Code of Ordinance, the Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons about the proposal removal of two calorie pear trees with a diameter of approximately 15 inches. These trees will be removed to accommodate a new seating area to view the Concord River. The applicant on the shade tree. May I know who's here for this?
Mr. Chair, I'm here on behalf of the city.
Oh, okay.
I'm calling in via Zoom.
Sure, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
First of all, I just wanted to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight.
Okay, I'm on Zoom, okay.
Yes, sir, yes.
We got somebody on Zoom, okay. I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, we got somebody on the Zoom. Okay, I'm sorry.
Am I all set to go?
Yeah, go ahead, please, I'm sorry.
I apologize. No, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Jorge Martinez. I work for the Department of Planning and Development for the City of Lowell. Just wanted to give you a brief context in regards to the project. This project arose about eight months ago, and its mission is to address the need for an ADA accessible boat launch at Muldoon Park. In order to accommodate the seating area that we feel will give views of the Concord River and act as a public benefit to the city, we have to unfortunately remove two calorie pear trees. Although we are removing two trees, they are listed as invasives, or they will be listed as invasives as recent as next year, and we'll be planting four trees in their place, four of which that will be more conducive to the harsh winters and the conditions that are close to the Concord River. With that being said, I can give you a quick view of some of the plans if I'm allowed to share the screen.
Okay, thank you.
You should be able to share your screen, yeah.
That's not our new and improved park, unfortunately. Yeah, so the plan in front of you here is the permitting plan that's going to go before the Conservation Commission in a few months, hopefully. But this plan, I felt, gave a better location as to where the trees will be removed. So if you can see my cursor, the two calorie pears that are going to be removed are directly in this position. The rest are going to remain. And then if I can go a little bit further on into the plan set, that can give you guys a view of the new and improved seating area that's going to be there. So I believe the new trees are going to be planted in this strip here and scattered throughout the rest of the park. And a few of the calories will also remain. So we're not completely removing all of them. We're just removing the ones that'll be situated in this direct area. And with that being said, I can give the floor back to the planning board. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point in time, I'll open it up to public. Anybody this evening want to speak in favor of the shade tree on Aldoon Park? Anybody in favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? Any opposition? Any opposition? Any opposition? Hearing none? I'll turn it over to the board members.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, Mr. Fischette.
I think it's a pretty straightforward application. It's nice to see that the new trees will be planted on site. And, you know, I have to say, one of the benefits of serving on the board and going to visit the sites, I would really have no reason to go to Muldoon Park, I can honestly tell you. And walking through that area, I actually took some photos of the Concord River and the railroad trestle. Just what a spectacular view and spectacular spot. So it's nice that they're going to actually do some enhancements from seating area for the boat launch and planting even more trees that they're taking down. So obviously in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fischette. Caleb, any questions?
No, the plan shows where the trees, replacement trees will be placed, so I'm happy with the proposal. Thank you.
Andy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of thoughts I went by as well. And I did think it was as interesting as Jerry did. It's a nice area. It's a really great park for the residents in that area. I would have two comments with regard to the tree ordinance. One, it actually has the Conservation Commission as the board. Probably should be amended if we are truly going to be hearing these. That's suggestion one. And two, the tree removal permits give you certain requirements that must be met. It's going to be close to alleviate a substantial hardship to the general public, but I think we could probably get away with that. But what should be added is removal of an invasive species to this code. So two suggestions: update the tree code, put the correct board, and probably include invasive species in that.
If I can just interject really quickly. One, just minor detail, I don't know if it relates to the language. Calorie pears aren't currently listed as an invasive species. They are going to be listed as an invasive species next year, I believe, and they'll be removed from Massachusetts Tree Nurseries. I know in the grand scheme of things, it doesn't really affect the tree removal permit. I just want to make sure that the language is correct, if that's at all possible.
Thank you, sir. I'm in favor of the shade tree hearing. I do like the fact that we see two trees are coming out and four new ones are going up and they're going back from the same site. A lot of times, we don't see where the new trees are going. We're being told they'll be planted somewhere in the city. So it's very nice to see these new ones going right back in the exact same site, which I thought was very pleasant to see. So I'm in favor of the shade tree proposal. So must I request of the board for the shade tree hearing? I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
Motion being second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none? The votes for in favor, none against. It's approved. Good luck and wish you well, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I appreciate your time.
So the next matter we have on the agenda, we have 113 Walker Street for site plan review and a special permit. We also have 113 Walker Street on for definitive subdivision. So what I'd like to do is obviously take both matters at the same time, even though they're listed separately on our agenda. But obviously, I believe it's going to be a lot of be overkill listening to both presentations. This way, we can do one with all the same address. So what I'll do to start off, if nobody has any objections, is I'll read the two advertisements, and then we'll hear from the applicant. Is that acceptable to the applicant if I read them both together? Is it acceptable if I read both conditions, both?
That's fine.
Do them simultaneously?
Yep, thank you.
Okay. So we're going to start off with the first matter is for the site plan and special permit. 113 Walker Street. The Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to all interested persons relative to an application by Walker Street LLC to subdivide the existing lot of 113 Walker Street into three lots. Maintain the existing two-family home and construct two duplexes on either side of the existing two-family home on the new lot. The subject property is located in the traditional multifamily zoning district. The proposal requires site plan review approval per Section 11.4 for a development with greater than three residential units and special permit approval per Section 11.3 for, excuse me, in Article 12.1 for the proposed use. Now, 113 Walker Street, definitive subdivision. The Lowell Planning Board will hear, hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to an application by Walker Street LLC to subdivide the existing lot at the above address into three lots, maintain the existing two-family home, and construct two duplexes on either side of the existing two-family home on the new lot. The subject property is located in the traditional multifamily zoning district. The new lots will not meet the minimum frontage requirement per Section 5.1 of the Lowell Zoning Ordinance. The project requires definitive subdivision approval from the Lowell Planning Board on the Lowell Subdivision of Land Regulation. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Chairman Linehan, gentlemen of the planning board. Good evening. For the record, my name is Attorney John Cox, 375 Gorm Street, Lowell, Massachusetts. I represent Mr. John Norton, who's here this evening, Walker Street LLC, the owner of the property at 113 Walker Street. For those of you who've been on this board for a long time, this may seem like deja vu. This is actually the third time that we've been before the planning board in the last four years. Started back in 2000 during COVID, and then 2022, and here again. So I don't know, maybe Mr. Walker wants us to be back. Mr. Norton wants us to be back in 2026. I don't know. But the plan's gotten better each time. So this is, this lot is approximately 37,000 square feet. It currently has a two-family home basically in the center of the lot, and that's it. So again, back to the history. In July, July 20th of 2020, the planning board approved this plan which called for eight housing units on the property. Mr. Norton had a lot of discussions with the neighbors, especially the director butler, Mr. Patonard. And it came back in December 5th, 2022. This board approved it for nine units of housing. After further discussion with the neighbors, and we have letters of support, which I think the board has, from both the Acre Neighborhood in support of this project, as well as Mr. Patton, Mr. and Mrs. Patonard, who are the director butlers. They're both, Mr. Patonard's letter is dated August 12th, 2024. The neighborhood, the Acre Neighborhood is dated September 23rd, '24. Both supporting this project. So this project calls for six units of housing. I know that's unusual for numbers to go down, but I think that's a good thing, and the neighborhood certainly appreciates it. And that's, I'm sure, why they support it. So we look at the memo dated October 28th, 2024, from DPD, which I know the board has, which talks about this. And it's a very, I think it's a very strong memo in support of this project. If you look at note number two, it says that the, we were before the zoning board of appeals on September 23rd, we were granted variances without conditions. It was unanimous. There was no, there was no opposition. The memo further goes on to state on number four, the zoning board granted variance approval for reduced frontage. Number five, the proposed use is in line with the existing development patents of the area. Number six, the applicant proposes adding shade trees to the front of the property. DPD is supportive of this, and the board may wish to condition approval with the inclusion of the shade trees. Certainly, we are agreeable to that. Number seven talks about stormwater comments, and the applicant shall obtain stormwater approval from LRWU. We're in agreement with that. No issues at all. And then the number nine proposal will add needed housing to the city in a manner consistent with existing development patents. And probably the number 10, the most important comment, DPD does not have concerns about this proposal. Again, it's been a long time coming. This would clearly add to the housing stock in the city. New housing, which is clearly needed and something the city strives for. It's a great use of a vastly underutilized piece of property, 38,000, 37,000 square feet. And clearly will bring added tax revenue to the city, which is obviously always a good thing. So we hope that the board will join with the ZBA in granting approval of this development. And I think this is the last step for this version of it. And hopefully, this will be the last step all the way through, so we can get some new housing in that neighborhood. But here, Matt Hammer is here, obviously, this evening. We can answer any questions you may have. That's a depiction of what we expect this to look out, look like when it's finished. And we hope that you will grant approval of this, and appreciate your, appreciate all of your time and interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Clark. Matt, anything you'd like to present? You got your drawings up there. You can walk us through those, please.
For the record, Matt Hammer, Lamplex Engineering and Surveying, 10 George Street, Lowell, Mass. This is a nice rendering of the project. This is really what it's going to look like. This existing building is going to remain. And that's, you know, the founding reason why it was important to leave that building. There's a lot of value there. It's a nice constructed building. It's a two-family building as it is now, and it was desired to leave that in place. That building is somewhat centrally located on the property. So in order to leave this building and have duplexes on either side of the building, it was necessary to divide the frontage up and essentially equal components in order to get all three along the street and having them look consistent with each other. So this is a rendering of the existing, and then these are the two duplexes on either side. Each duplex is going to have a drive on either side for the vehicles for each respective unit. And then this unit's going to have parking in the rear. And then this unit here will have parking on each side, which I will show you on the site plan. Again, this was one parcel. That was 36,842 square feet. We're intending to subdivide the property into three lots. One lot here, which will be 8,143 square feet. This parcel here, that has the existing two-family, would be 20,221 square feet. And then this lot here, which would be 8,100 square feet. In order to get the existing building to be as conforming to the extent practicable with dividing up the three lots, what ended up resulting was, in order to get this drive in here to accommodate the parking for that, for that two-family, you end up with two lots on either side, essentially with the same amount of frontage. Having that reduced frontage required various variances to be granted by the zoning board of appeals. And, you know, because you're saving that existing duplex, the other two duplexes look similar and fit into the neighborhood and are along the same front facade plane of the street. The variances were granted, as well as a variance for the curb cuts. The way these are laid out, and this provides a blow-up of the rendering. This unit in the back has access through this drive. And it would be the same on each one. And then on the other side of the duplex, they have their own drive. So it's kind of nice that each unit owner are not going to conflict with each other with their vehicles coming in and out of each respective unit. And then this has similar elements in terms of the architectural components with the duplex that complements the existing duplex or two-family that's there. It's a different configuration than the existing duplex. But as you can see, effort was put in to carry some of the same elements of the existing duplex to the two new duplexes on either side. As I said, each unit will have drives on either side. And then the existing two-family will utilize this drive to get to the rear. That'll have five parking spots. There'll be walkways coming out to the sidewalk out front. And the entire area here is proposed to be reconstructed. We would provide separate drawings to the engineering department for that work. So this entire section, which essentially doesn't have a formal sidewalk, it's essentially one large curb cut, will now be formalized and improved out front. The shade trees that were, that are shown on the plan, that was part of the condition of the zoning board of appeals decision. And then each, each of the duplexes will have their own drainage, their own sewer, their own water for each respective unit. And then I can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Anything further?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
So, excuse me. At this point in time, I'll open the meeting up to the public. We did receive two letters in favor, so I'll read these first before I open up to anybody who wants to speak in favor. This is from Raymond Hazel Paton to Lowell Planning Board and the zoning board of appeals. Dear Chairman Linehan and Chairman Peck, members of the planning board and members of the zoning board of appeals, this letter is regarding the proposed new site design at 113/119 Walker Street. As a director butler, I'd like to go on record that I support the proposed site design showing two new reduced frontage lots on Walker Street with one lot on each side of the existing structure. Over the last few years, I have met with the owner numerous times and believe the building design will fit best with the neighborhood. The developer has a long-term plan for the property and is invested in bettering the neighborhood. Sincerely, Raymond Hazel Paton. Next letter is action from Acre Coalition to improve our neighborhood. We, 113 Walker Street, to all concerned. I have talked in opposition of this project many months ago. There were some items and concerns that needed to be addressed. John has successfully addressed the concerns and upgraded the plans, layouts, and design above and beyond what we're hoping to achieve. John's goals are now to make the new project a showpiece highlighting the character of the neighborhood. There may be incidental details to iron out, but I am in favor of the new plans and design. And would like to thank John for deciding to be part of our Acre neighborhood by retaining ownership of the apartments once completed. Thank you, Dave Valet, Action Acre Neighborhood Group. Anybody here this evening like to speak in favor of this project? Anybody in favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? Anybody in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none? I'll turn it over to the board members.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Sure, Mr. Fischette.
So first of all, I'd like to commend the applicant because it certainly has gone through quite an evolution. And in your right, it's very rare we see fewer units come in with each iteration of the plan. But I think we keep talking about streetscape, and I think how important it is, how it looks on the, on the street in the neighborhood. And this fits in a lot better at that section of the neighborhood. I know further down on Walker Street, there's similar type of projects that were originally submitted. But I think this really fits into that, that area. So I think the letter of support answered the question more than, I think, the material I was looking at. So these are going to be retained as rental units? Is that correct? And the, I'm just a little curious the way, and obviously, from the street perspective, it's going to look good. But I think the way, you know, you've got about 11,000 square feet or so in the rear, and that's an awfully wide driveway. I suspect, are we going to be looking at a future proposal of some housing back there? Is that? Yeah.
Good evening. I'm John Norton. I'm the owner. So at some point, potentially, and I did discuss that with the neighbors, but that is not in my, in the foreseeable future, so maybe.
But people are aware that, I mean, that's a significant amount of land back there.
That's, that's right. And I mean, it is technically underdeveloped, even by the zoning dimensional requirements. But my intent right now is this project. I intend to keep it, and that's very important to the neighbors. You know, I've built a very good relationship with the, in the neighborhood. And one of their biggest concerns was if it was a for-sale product, they'd have many owners to deal with. And I guess other, they've had issues with other properties in the area in terms of maintenance. So, you know, as the neighbors say, that there's just one phone call, they can reach me anytime. So that was a big thing for the neighbors as one owner.
Although it's not a condition, and potentially, they're all on their own lot.
That's, that's correct. That's correct. Technically, they could be, but that's not my intent, and that's what I've communicated.
Sure.
And that's, seems to be what the neighbors are interested in.
I think, again, what, however that happens down the road, I think what, the finished product looks a lot better than what was being proposed.
Yeah, we did. We put a lot of effort into the architectural design. The intent was to make it seem like it blends with the neighborhood. And we looked at the properties that were directly across the street, and it's definitely in keeping with the character, especially when you compare it to the original plan, which was, if you recall, many years ago, townhouses. And that was one of the big pushbacks from the neighborhood and with the potential of having eight new owners. So after working with the neighbors, it became, okay, well, if I was to keep them, would that make you guys feel more comfortable? And that was very important. And we came back and we got the nine units approved for a three-family and a six-family. Again, we came back with this after, you know, going back and forth of, you know, looking at the design and everything. This is way more in keeping with the neighborhood. The other plan that was prior approved was, to your point, there are other developments down the road that, that would fit. In this area, there just aren't many triple deckers. Most of them are gable roof just like this, so.
No, I commend you for being willing to work with the neighbors and come up with the plan that we're looking at right here, so.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just who owns the 50, was that a 55 Chevy that's sitting in that?
Oh, that's actually, that's actually somebody in the neighborhood.
Oh, okay.
Not mine.
It adds considerably to the property, I believe.
Maybe one day. Again, it's the neighbors.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fischette. Caleb, any questions?
I, fellow member asked about the subdivision, I think. I find it interesting. You have a T, but you fit other dimensionally and you get the variance. So I'm satisfied with that. And I concur that it looks good from the street. And I mean, in terms of characteristics of the character of neighborhoods, it fits right in with. right in with what, what I see a lot down the street. So, I mean, even there is a little bit more space in between. One question I have is, are you going to improve any of the fencing or screening around? Like, I know right now, I can't, well, I know it's winter.
Thanks, Caleb. I was going to say something. I failed to mention that there's going to be a solid white fence on either side. And as, as you may recall, that was one of the other conditions from the prior approval. So we're going to maintain the white solid fencing on the right and the left-hand side.
Okay, thank you. Although I can see through the rear as well. And I'm just wondering if like, you know, are there any plantings you want to, like, I guess for, oh, I mean, to, to the parking lot behind, right?
The property will be fully landscaped.
Landscaped?
Yes.
Okay.
He's going to want to do landscaping throughout the project.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Oh, one to a certain, just more for, for the future residents, right? Yeah, because right now it's winter, I can see through, you know, to the back. And then I, I think, just a little unsighty if I lived there, but.
Do you know it's in the back?
I know, it's UMass Little parking lot.
Yeah.
Yes.
And it actually slopes up in the rear, so it's above the project. And there's a significant amount of vegetation in the back along that rear property.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep. One more question about trash. So right now, it seems like you, you can fit the trash receptacles with the city. Are you going, just go with the city service or?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I think, I think it's very reasonable and good scaling to the neighborhood. So I, again, I give credit to the, to your team and your consideration of the neighbors' comment and concerns. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Caleb. Any?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I drove by there. I guess one of the questions I would have is, is what's going to be done with this two-and-a-half story in the middle? Because it looked like it could use some TLC.
That's a, that's a great question. So the existing structure is in very, very good condition, specifically on the inside. But the exterior could use some TLC to your point. So the intent is to, a lot of the windows have already been replaced. So, you know, if there was something that needed to be replaced, we'd do that, new siding, et cetera. And then, again, fully landscaped. So it will look very similar to that rendering that you're looking at. The entrance, everything, it needs a little, little sprucing up. So that is the intent, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Norton. When I drove by there, I was troubled by the T. I still don't get why it's not divided into 12,000 square foot lots, other than it's going to be repurposed in the future. I don't think that's a great idea personally. I like what you guys are doing as far as the neighborhood. I haven't been here that long, and I like the fact that you're working with the area and the neighborhood as far as sizing down the project. I think that's, that's, that's a benefit to the neighborhood. I don't think it's a benefit to the neighborhood to have a private drive in there that's going to be used to access more buildings. And that's what it appears to be. And so I don't like that. I do appreciate the fact that you guys are going to be putting fencing. I think that will, will help the project give some privacy to the different lots. The shade trees make a lot of sense, can only add to value in the neighborhood. But the T is troubling. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tenza. I like the configuration of the three houses, the way they face the street. I think it's much more appealing than what we've seen in the past. I mean, they came in the first time, we approved it. The applicant came back the second time, said they wanted to work with the neighbors to make them more appealing to them and work with the neighbors. And we approved that as well. And I think this rendering is the best of all the three that we've seen. And obviously, I think it definitely concurs more with the neighborhood, the way it is going down the street, looking at those where a lot of those houses are all two families or duplexes, the way they're set up. So I like the, and the fact that they're going to make the house in the middle more appealing with new, with new siding and dress that up a little bit, I think, then all three of them are going to look really nice. So I'm in favor of the party. I think they've done a good job to satisfy the neighbors and the streetscape, I think, looks much better than what we saw before. So tonight, what we're looking for is, we need three votes, one for a site plan, one for a special permit, and then one for the definitive subdivision. I'll make a motion that we approve the site plan with the conditions to add the shade trees to the front of the property, which the applicant said they were in favor of. Also, condition that the applicant shall obtain stormwater approval from L.R.W.W.U. The board shall approve with the engineering comment. I think Matt indicated that, at least on the, the front of the buildings there, they're going to be moved and reset to, they're going to be set to granite curb and construction new concrete sidewalks along the three properties of the project, add the granite curb corners at each driveway. I know those were comments by the engineering department. I believe Attorney Cox said they have no problem with those. I do see that the fire department, now that the two new structures are two families versus a three and a six, they have no comments on the matter, being the two-family. And we had to, I would say I'll just go with those one, two, three conditions. So that's the motion. Do we have a second on that?
Second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion second, all in favor of that?
Aye.
And then, because the chair voted, so the site plan is approved with the conditions Now we need a vote for the special permit.
Chairman, I will make a motion to approve the special permit with the same conditions as the site plan approval.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposition? Hearing none, the motion carries. All in favor, none against. And the last vote we have is the subdivision.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the definitive subdivision incorporating the same three conditions that were part of the approval for the site plan.
Second, the motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposition?
Yes.
So we have three in favor for the subdivision and one against. So that motion carries as well. So the site plan, the special permit, and the subdivision have all been approved. Good luck, we wish you well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, gentlemen. I want to thank Francesca and her staff for all their help with the project.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you in 2026.
Good luck.
2026.
Yeah. Okay, moving along on the agenda, we have a proposed zoning amendment. We have 234-268 Mount Vernon Street, 89 Woolley Street, and 5 Farnum Street in Lowell for zoning amendment. In accordance with Mass Gemma Law's Chapter 40A, Section 5, the Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinance City of Lowell, Mass. with respect to Chapter 290, therefore entitled Lowell Zoning Code, by extending the existing urban neighborhood multi-family zoning district to include an area presently zoned light industrial at the addresses as mentioned. And we have for the applicant on this matter.
So it looks like no one, this was a city application.
Okay.
I'm going to try to contact the person that should be representing the city. If you could just give me a couple of minutes, I'm going to try to get in contact with them.
So we do have a comments from the Peter Columbus, from the Assistant Planner. We got to the zoning change, as indicated as I read. The exhibits were zoning boundary descriptions and maps submitted by the Lowell Department of Planning and Development. The Department of Plan Development seeking to extend the urban neighborhood multi-family zoning district to cover the parcels as indicated. Lots are currently zoned in the light industrial zone. In 2018, these lots were moved from the UMF district to the light industrial district in advance of a particular development, but this development did not move forward. DPD feels the best use of the parcels is to revert back to the original zoning. The light industrial district does not allow housing development, aside from mixed-use buildings with a maximum of two units. By rezoning to UMF, developers will be able to pursue a variety of housing projects. Residential buildings in the neighborhood are almost entirely multi-family, showing developers their visibility for similar projects. Additional multi-family developments will help the city meet some of the goals set forth in our comprehensive plan, Lowell Forward. Plans call for the cadence 3150 housing units in next six years. Lowell needs a land use zoning framework that allows the development affordable and diverse housing type, low-clated close to existing, and planned mobility network services and amenities. The parcels are a short walk from L.I.T.A., stop at the corner of Broadway and Mount Vernon on the Broadway-UMass line. The line also brings you to the train at the Gallagher Terminal. DPD Project Manager Team comments. Huguen Martinez, Urban Renewal Project Manager. The proposed rezoning of Mount Vernon, Woolley and Farnum Street from L.I. to U.M.F. is in line with the original objectives of the Acre plan. This initiative is designed to promote the development of much-needed housing with our community. As the zoning revert to its original designation, it will support uses that accurately reflect the neighborhood's residential character. I am confident that this application will produce positive outcomes to both the Acre neighborhood and the city of Lowell. Let's see, we have economic development comments. This proposal aligns with the recommendations of the Acre Urban Renewal Plan. The proposal would change the zoning from the current L.I. district to the U.M.F. district, which is more appropriate for the current active uses in this area. DPD has also disposed of city-owned parcels in this area for housing development, and the proposed zoning change would allow for that development to take place, putting these parcels into services, residential properties, which are currently in short supply, will have a net positive impact on municipal revenues as they have been underutilized as industrial property for decades. Let's see, if we have any other?
I have someone from the city that'll be joining in just a moment, but thank you.
I was going to say, Mr. Chairman, I thought you were doing a good job just reading the memo. I would have, I would have acted on that.
Well, I like to read where this is coming from. Obviously, we, other parts of our materials, it looked like this was referred to the City Council Subcommittee, Subcommittee. They sent a positive reply back to the City Council. And obviously, the City Council sends this to us for a recommendation only. And then from here, it will go back to the City Council for their final decision on the zone change.
Plus, this has to go to the state, right? Because it's part of the urban, is it changing the urban, the acre?
That's right, I did read that.
Yeah. So there's a lot of layers to this.
Right. So the, it is, oh.
Yeah, Caleb?
There's a top, the, the top of the B, right? It's the after, and then before is the one below, right? The green circle is marked, yeah. This is current.
Right, where that's carved out, and then this would be part of the unit. Yep. And it's on, basically, on Mount Vernon.
Yeah, usually a before and after.
He'll be on in five minutes.
This does not make good, for good television.
Commercial.
Jerry couldn't help but bring the other thing. I liked the picture in the article, though, when they showed it in the paper. Ooh, yes, indeed.
I'm at home, and I thought of you, Dennis.
Checking the investment log here, too.
And they're still talking about a completion date of 2028, so.
This looks nice here.
Yeah, it really is. That was, when they first, and that was, you know, part of the input from the Advisory Committee, too, as far as observation decks, and they incorporated a lot of the stuff from, suggestions from the Advisory Committee, which was great.
Yeah, it looked pretty fancy, Jerry.
Yeah, isn't that, it really is, yeah, no.
Yeah, the observation deck was filled.
And there's a couple of them. There'll be one on the other side, too.
I like the fact that there's, we're just talking here about the Rook Bridge while we're waiting to come back on. The sidewalks on both sides of the bridge. Sometimes you only get on one side. I mean.
And it's dedicated pedestrian and bicycle.
How many lanes in each direction, Jerry?
I want to say it's two in each direction.
Right, yeah.
Two in each?
Yeah, no, it's going to be quite a bridge.
Yeah, they need, they need that.
And like I said, they incorporated a lot of suggestions from the Advisory Committee, which was really nice. They were listening to us.
Where are they trying to hook it up to, Jerry?
So it'll be from the, on the Wood Street side, it'll be that same spot. But it's going to go diagonally across and line up with Old Ferry Road.
Diagonally.
So it's going to be, you're going to go on a kind of a left-hand track. And the thing is, that increases your views, because now it's a longer span. Now, it costs more money, right? But the span is.
We have someone from the city. Thank you.
We'll come back to.
We can come back to the.
We'll come back to the Board Planning Update, yes. Back to the agenda for the zoning amendment. Amendment.
Good evening, members of the board. How are you?
Good evening.
Thank you so much. My name is Camilo Spiett. I'm the Deputy Director of the Department of Planning and Development. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. So, yes, I think we're going to be talking about the change in zoning for the lot between, on the corner of Broadway and Mount Vernon.
Yes. So I just read into the record the comments that we received by Peter, from the Assistant Planner, and highlighted all the comments that were in his handout.
Okay. Do you guys have any questions, or do you want me to elaborate a little bit on what the vote is for?
You can get, we have no question this time. If you just want to give us a brief summary of what, why this being changed, what you feel is important about the zone change?
Absolutely. So prior to 2004, this was already zoned for residential development. And at that point, there were conversations about goals for economic development and job creation in the city. At some point, there was somebody interested in redeveloping that site into light industrial development. I believe for a printing, a company that would create a couple of jobs. But unfortunately, that deal never went through. And so we changed the zoning to light industrial, but the development never went through. I think in lieu of that, and given our recent development in the planning, in the planning exercise for Lowell Forward, our master plan, for the next 20 years, and housing being a pressing issue for the city, we figure that it will be, coming upon ourselves as a planning development, to recommend the change of the zoning back to residential for that lot. It is, I believe, combined between the three sites that we own. The city owns somewhere on 6,000 square feet that could become a residential units for, that the city severely needs, one. And two, in a way that is more in line with what the existing context is. We're talking about residential development that's responding to the context of what the neighborhood is. It's more in line with physically what it should be, which is low-scale development, but in terms of uses as well. And instead of developing that as an industrial site. Hence, the Department of Planning and Development recommending to change that back to residential development. I don't have a number of the potential units that you could build there, but we're presuming that it wouldn't be a number that would be in detriment to the neighborhood. You could provide parking on site, which would be required, so there wouldn't be any burden to the neighborhood in terms of providing parking on the streets. But also, again, like I mentioned before, the scale that we think could happen there would be more in line with what the neighborhood is, rather than some industrial development that potentially could become more of a detriment to the neighborhood. I believe there will be access, and forgive me, as I don't have the drawings with me, but I think there will be access on the back of the property, which will be on Will Street. So there wouldn't be any issues with traffic management on Mount Vernon or Broadway. And I think the way we could develop that property by providing parking on site will be more of a benefit to the neighborhood than than having an industrial use there as it was potentially proposed back in 2004. What else can I say? I think, you know, you all know with the conversations in the master plan, the pressing need for housing, having a lot of that size being developed for something that would not be housing, would not be beneficial for the city as a whole, not only for the neighborhood. I think the city as a whole has a pressing need for housing. But ideally, with the change in zoning, we'll be also very careful about how that gets developed for residential uses. And hence our recommendation. I don't know if there's any more information that, I'll be happy to answer as many questions as I can, given the short time of the meeting, but but I'm happy to hear questions or comments or any concerns that you guys may have. I appreciate your time, by the way, and apologies for the last minute jumping for these.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open up the meeting to the public. If anybody likes to speak in favor of the zoning change? In favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? Anybody like to speak in opposition of the zoning change? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none? I'll turn it over to the board members. Any of the board members have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Camilio, I just want to, I guess I want to verify one thing. Is it, so the city owns the properties, the lots, right now? And I saw in one of the bullet items, it's an opportunity to sell to private redevelopers. So I'm assuming, so the city will also gain from the sale of the lots and then the redevelopment of the lots. Is that, is that my understanding as to what's happening? It's not, this is all, this entire parcel is owned by the city. Is that correct?
That is completely correct, and you're right, that we will be gaining some sort of value from whoever. We haven't had any specific conversations with anybody, but should we dispose of these properties because we own them all, we will be gaining some cash flow for the city, correct?
Sure, okay. Do we know, is it, are they, are there any environmental issues with any of this property, do you know? Just curious.
There are, I believe, there are studies, I don't believe. There are studies, but they're catered to a property right in the corner, which is not owned by the city. Right on the corner of Mount Vernon and Broadway, that used to be a gas station. I don't know the details of the environmental assessments. I believe there were some spill contamination on part of our property, but that has been mitigated. In terms of the phases to which that has been mitigated, I'm not completely sure, and we can obviously share that information. But as of today, I don't think it will be an obstacle for redevelopment or for us to sell the properties.
Good, great, thank you. No, I think it, I think it fits in, I think it's actually a better use than the light industry in that spot. You know, we've dealt with some of the conflict with light industry and residential in the area. So it's a delicate spot, because you're right, right, you know, they had the gas company behind this, close to school. It's still kind of some industrial use, but then you're right on Broadway, where it's residential. Rock and Willie, it's kind of combined, so it's an interesting spot. But I think it's, I think it's a good opportunity to create some housing and really create some revenue for the city. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Caleb, question, comment?
No, I think, I think, remember, for shadow cover a lot. I just find it an interesting place. I mean, what I'm expecting, the residential districts have industrial units, whereas the industrial district have residential units. So it's quite a mix there. But being next to the school, and also, actually, I see that there's a sign that they say the brick building next to the school, I think, is going to be a church. Yeah, so that's right in front of this parcel across the street. So I agree with the presentation that residential units will be a good use of this parcel. And it was previously residential as well. So I think it makes a lot of sense here. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Caleb. Danny?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my understanding that this is for our recommendation to the City Council. Is that correct, Mr. Chairman? Okay. I drove around the parcel, and I was a little surprised that it had a prior residential use to it, or that's what it was classified as, because it was nothing but commercial when I drove around it. Is there some residential abutting it? Sure. Is there a lot of light industrial around it? Yes. My biggest, my biggest beef with this is that sooner or later, we have to have jobs for people, because the biggest problem, according to the Lowell Forward and all the other plans, is that people don't have, are, what did they say? They're, they're challenged as far as rent. They're spending a lot, or most of their income, just trying to rent housing. So at a certain point, Lowell is going to run out of the land that they have. And I think one of the things that isn't being looked at is that we should be keeping some business and commercial property to actually use to create jobs, whether that's in concert with UMass Lowell, Middlesex Community College, or some of the businesses there. At a certain point, we're not going to have any properties to actually get people jobs. So that's my biggest beef with this. I think, I think at at a certain point, all the mill buildings are used for housing, so we can't use those for businesses. Obviously, housing is a need, but just building housing isn't, isn't the total answer. We got to have jobs with good pays for individuals to be able to afford the housing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'm in favor of the zoning, since it was residential at one point. And obviously, they tried to change it to bring in light industrial, and that didn't work out. So as indicated, going back to residential, I have no objections to that. So before us tonight, we have to make a recommendation, either positive or negative, to the City Council for their zoning hearing. Is this scheduled on the council already, or do you know the date yet?
Typically, we do the following council meeting, so that would be this coming Tuesday.
It wouldn't be like tomorrow night, it would be like.
Oh, correct, yes, next week.
All right, all right. So I'd make a motion that we give a positive recommendation to the City Council for the zoning amendment.
Mr. Chairman, can I just add that, you know, for the following reasons? And I would just, I would just refer to the bullet items on the City Manager's letter dated September 12th to the City Council. I think the, I think that articulates all of the points of why this was being moved forward from the city through the council Subcommittee and coming to the Planning Board. I concur with those bullet items.
Sure, I would amend the motion to incorporate those bullet items.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd second the motion.
Okay, so a motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In opposition? Okay, so the votes, three for, one against. So the recommendation going forward to the council. So moving along, do we have any comments from any board members or updates?
Mr. Chairman, I just officially, you know, having served on the Rook Bridge Advisory Committee, in which the committee has really been disbanded because our purpose has been served. But there was, there was an update in the newspaper back on October 27th regarding the Rook Bridge, and that it is being put out to bid. It is design-build, so it will not hold up the project. And the funding delayed, I think will delay the completion of it, but the groundbreaking should hopefully be on schedule. And they're still looking at a 2028 opening. So, and I know there was some renderings. There's some on, there was some online from, I believe, the MassDOT site. But again, it gives, for people that aren't out, looking, actively looking, it was something, the view on the, in the paper as far as the observation decks. And we're talking about the span of the bridge, because it is going diagonally across from the Rook, from the Wood Street side, where it crosses now, that's where it will still connect. But it'll line up with Old Ferry Road, and it really increases the opportunity to really, the views on the river. And just picture the regattas that they've been having over the last month and being able to have crowds on that, on that bridge. So I think it's a real positive development. And the special lighting that's going to be under the bridge as well. And also, they redesigned, where the bridge comes down right now, there's actually going to be a park that's going to be built there as well. That's really going to enhance that whole riverwalk. So really, like I said, stay healthy so you can see the completion of this. But I think it's going to be, going to be worth seeing.
Thank you for the update. Any other board members have any updates, or?
Mr. Chairman, when do we vote for our officers on?
Yeah, what we do for that? So we can put that on the agenda for next meeting?
Sure, absolutely.
I know, I was hoping that we would get a new member since Richard left September 1st. But that hasn't happened yet, so now we're into November, so I guess we should put it on the next agenda.
The officers?
Yeah, election of officers?
Yes.
Yeah, I know we usually do it early in September, but I was hoping that if we had a new member on, you know, since Mr. Lockhart left, then we'd have a full board to vote on it. And now we have, Allison's gone as well.
Right.
So it's just the four of us, but.
Yeah, we can do that.
So we can just put that off in the next meeting. Usually, that doesn't take
Sure.
too much time consuming. I know we're down a member from the Historic Board, because Richard used to represent the Historic Board for us for a long period of time. Probably like 10 years plus. Was chairman most of the time, yeah, so. Did you hear what he said?
He's interested, he's thinking about.
Oh, okay. Yeah, okay. Any other, follow-up? Any other board members? No? Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second? Motion made. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Caleb, yes, we are adjourned. Good night, and thank you, everybody.